Roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Pang.
Yes, here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Ronna Patel.
Here.
Mr. Eriko.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement?
Okay, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, public law 1975, C231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office. Copies of this notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger.
Thank you. So today we are having our meeting in the beautiful gym of John Adams. So now we have the principal of John Adams, Dr. Valentine, to, you know, give us a couple of words.
Good evening, everyone. I'm thrilled to be here tonight as the proud principal of John Adams Middle School, where we have the most jemazing students and teachers in all of Edison. A highlight for tonight, in addition to the new space we are occupying, is the jemazing Chamber Orchestra, who will perform their final selection shortly. The Chamber Orchestra is a group of 25 students, within the total of 143 orchestra students that we have this year. The Jams Orchestra program has truly blossomed, from just 14 students back in 1998, when Mrs. Montana first began teaching, to a projected 150 students next year. That's right, 150 talented young musicians, making magic under the direction of Mrs. Montana. Nice little round of applause for Mrs. Montana. We've grown so much that we've added another teacher to the program, Mr. Warren, our fabulous new low-string specialist, who's already helped launch new bass and cello players. This year, our Chamber Orchestra received a special grant to support their community service work. They performed twice at the Veterans Memorial Home in Menlo Park, and will head back in April. What a wonderful way to share their talent and heart. We can't wait to showcase all of our amazing grade-level orchestras and the Chamber Orchestra at our spring concert on May 7th. And just a few days later, our 7th and 8th grade musicians will head to Donnie Park for the Music in the Parks Festival, while our 6th graders are Broadway-bound. It's been a truly jemazing year, and the best is yet to come. A special thank you to Mrs. Montana and the Chamber Orchestra, who will now perform their final selection, Ode to a Joyride.
Thank you, good job. So we're gonna take a short recess, and if the kids want to go home, and you can go home and do your homework. And then we're gonna resume, just a short recess, we'll resume our normal agenda. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna resume our meeting, and so we have two great presentations that's coming up, so I'll have Dr. Alderelli say a couple of words before we start the presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Shi. So ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education, we actually have a few presentations that you're about to witness right now. All stem from the hard work of the planning committee in relationship to our strategic plan, which was adopted earlier this school year. I'm really pleased with the work that's being done, not only from a leadership perspective, but it's also wonderful to be a part of it and witness the great things that are happening. Watching staff members be empowered to work on problems that affect the organization, come up with solutions to those, in order to make them better. And it gives me great pleasure to introduce a team that's really highlighted a component of our mission statement that we adopted, in a manner that I think is going to be catchy, a little bit more marketable. And without any further hesitation, I would like to turn it over to the North Star Presentation Team.
Good evening, Dr. Alderelli, President Shi, and fellow members of the Board of Education. Thank you so much for this opportunity to let our North Star Statement shine through. This is an idea that really sparked from our time at our Administrator Retreat at the Apple Headquarters. We are so excited to not only introduce our North Star Statement, but know that it's grounded in the work of our strategic plan. For those of you who don't know, my name is Samantha Grimaldi, I'm the middle school math supervisor. I was fortunate enough to present this idea to Dr. Alderelli, who turned around and said, "Put together a team, Grimaldi, and you have six weeks to make it happen." So I put together this phenomenal team that is behind me. We have Ms. Jennifer Fisher, Vice Principal of Lyndon Al. We have Dr. Joanie Valentine, Principal of John Adams Middle School, Ms. Kristin Tissoy, Supervisor of Academic Programs, and Ms. Nicole Halpin, Supervisor of CTE. So throughout history, explorers, travelers, and visionaries have looked to the North Star to find their way. Unlike other stars that shift in the night sky, the North Star remains constant, a fixed point of guidance during a long journey. Today, we embrace that same steadfast direction as we chart the future of our school district through our Vision 2030 strategic plan. We are so excited to announce that our North Star Statement falls directly under our engagement pillar. Not only was it a great way to bring in our community members, but it was essential that we brought in all stakeholders, developed a statement that could lead us forward as we continue our journey of our strategic plan.
To build the best products in the world that enrich people's lives. Over the summer, we had the opportunity, I am so loud, I'm sorry Dennis, I just blew your ears off, I saw that. I don't need a mic. Over the summer, we had the chance to visit Apple. And, everyone can hear. Over the summer, we had the opportunity to visit Apple, and we were really taken by the idea that at Apple, all work was driven by this mission statement. Whether we were talking to the custodians who were sweeping the halls, or talking to the head engineers, all of the work that they did was driven by this mission. And when I look around the room and see people on their phones, I can't help but think that the majority of us have our lives enriched by one of Apple's products, because they do just that. So coming off of Family Feud, for those of you that don't know, and winning the best money round, I might add, you can Google it, I thought it might be fun to try your hand at a little game. So I'm going to read a few North Star Statements from some other big corporations. And team, let's see if you can figure out the company that aligns with this mission. "To be Earth's most customer-centric company." Shout it out.
Amazon?
You've got, you win, that was very good, Amazon, boom, mic drop right there. What about "to bring inspiration and innovation to every athlete in the world"?
Nike.
Oh, you're two for two. I like it. I'll give you one more. "To organize the world's information and make it universally accessible and useful."
Google.
Google, exactly. Right? We know them, because these companies deliver. They deliver the product, they deliver the mission, they deliver the vision that's summarized in this North Star Statement. And that's what our team has done. We have put together a North Star Statement that is going to help shine a light on Edison and the great things that Edison can do, and the legacy we hope to leave behind.
So our North Star Statement is not just for us, it's for our entire community. So up here, it shows us all the people that we needed to make sure that we hear their voices. We needed to hear from our teachers, our students, our parents, across the board, from elementary all the way to high school. So Dr. Valentine's gonna share with you the journey that we took in the short weeks that we were given, to get everyone's voice to come up with our North Star Mission.
So as we mentioned, we worked together for about six weeks, and during that time, we had a fantastic journey. One of the things that we made sure we did was we got input from all of our stakeholders. And when I say that, I mean our students, our teachers, parents, community members, administrators within the district. We took a sample size, and we made sure that we surveyed them to find out what their input was. We had the privilege of working with Heather Daniel, who linked us with Thought Exchange. And Thought Exchange, for those of you who aren't familiar, allows you to provide surveys to different people and utilize the AI component, so that it will analyze all of your data. So that was a really awesome tool for us to use, because we were able to get that input from all of our stakeholder groups, analyze the data, and then determine what our common trends were across the district. So when we got that information back, it was easier for us to then really hone in on the important key attributes to the members of Edison Township Schools.
So like Dr. Valentine said, we took all that data, and then we sat down together as a team, and we created our statement. There was a lot of back and forth, there was a lot of good conversation. And then we took that statement, and then I think we did what was the most important part of this whole process, is we sent it back out. And as we all know, getting feedback is sometimes part of the hardest part of the process, to hear feedback on your really, like, important stuff that you accomplish. But it was the best part of the process, because we heard from all of our stakeholders again, we got feedback, we got what they liked, what they didn't like, terminology, different words, and then we got to sit back down again and refine, and talk about the little nuances of this word instead of this word, or change the order of things. And because we went through that entire process, I think we can really stand here and say how proud we are of the final product. And now, I am going to bring back Sam to introduce and to show you all our final Edison North Star Statement.
It was a long journey, but it was a short timeframe. We are so excited to announce Edison Township Public Schools' North Star Statement, empowering learners to shape the world with knowledge, purpose, and passion. We feel strongly that this statement not only embodies the importance of academics, but also the values of a well-rounded education. Our North Star Statement is more than just words. It's our unwavering commitment to our students, educators, and community. It represents our vision, values, and purpose, ensuring that every decision we make is aligned with the strategic plan that drives us forward. Like skilled navigators, we must stay focused on this guiding light. Challenges may arise, the path may shift, but our North Star keeps us moving with purpose, towards excellence in education, equity for all students, and a thriving, supportive learning environment. As a district, we are not just moving forward, we're moving with intention, clarity, and unity. Together, we will use this guiding vision to illuminate the way for our students and community. Because when we follow a true and steady course, we don't just reach our destination, we create a legacy. Let's stay the course, embrace the journey, and shape the world with knowledge, purpose, and passion. We quickly want to say thank you so much to Dr. Alderelli for this amazing experience. I came to you with a very, you know, rough idea, and you gave us this space and the place to really cultivate it. So thank you so much for putting so much faith in us. Another special thank you to Heather Daniel. She has been an integral part of making this become a reality. And I could never have done any of this without this fantastic team of strong, ambitious, and dedicated women behind me. They made this experience so impactful, and personally, one of my favorites of my career thus far. So thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next up.
It's me again.
Dr. Valentine. Yes.
Here I am again. I'm wearing many hats tonight. Principal of John Adams Middle School is one, team member of the North Star Presentation Team, and this role that I'm playing right now, this role that I'm playing, is the leader of the district's Innovation Committee, as well as Empower Edison. So I'd like to take a moment to share the story of Empower Edison, because it really is unique and it's exciting. Empower Edison was born from a simple conversation, and that conversation happened probably toward the end of the North Star Presentation finalization. The team that just presented, we were in conversations about our next steps, and what that would look like. So then there became this series of what-if questions. I can remember vividly calling Sam and saying, "What if we did this?" It was pause. "What if we worked with other administrators throughout the district, and provided them the same opportunity that we had?" Because when I tell you, and I know Sam mentioned this, we had the best time. This wasn't work for us. This was a passion project of shared leadership and innovation that truly took off and went in so many different directions that we never imagined. And we wanted to be able to provide that same opportunity for our colleagues. So the final what-if question was, what if every administrator within Edison had the opportunity to take an idea and align it to the strategic plan in a way that positively affected change? And that's how Empower Edison really came to life. So after that conversation, everything morphed from there and skyrocketed into something at lightning speed. We had conversations within our small group at the Innovation Committee, we had conversations with Dr. Alderelli and his team, we just needed him to give us the green light, which he did immediately. And then one of the things that became unique to our process is we worked collaboratively with the people at Apple. We had such a great experience at our Administrative Retreat over the summer. We wanted to recreate it for our administrators within Edison, but we also wanted to make it our own. We wanted to curtail it to educators, so that it became useful, so that it became something that we really knew could become a legacy within Edison. Through that collaboration, through that interaction, what we did was we listened to the administrative team when we were in Apple, when we were at the Apple Corporation in August. And one of the things that we heard a lot throughout the day was what a great experience it was, because everyone got to work with people they ordinarily wouldn't get to work with. And think about that, from an educator's point of view, as a principal of John Adams Middle School, I get to work with wonderful people every day, people within my building. This particular experience allowed for us to work with administrators all throughout the district, elementary, middle, and high school. Normally, we wouldn't get a chance to do that. So having that experience made it unique in and of itself. Also then, coming up with an idea and aligning it to the strategic plan helped build that anchor, that foundation, the unification that we've been looking for. We're a very large district, as all of you know. So having that opportunity to have that anchor within the strategic plan and those pillars made it even more impactful. How does Empower Edison work? An administrator brings forward an idea. That idea is then proposed to the Central Office Team, developed into a paragraph or two, and with that idea, that administrator proposes a team. They'll propose a team that goes across the district, again, elementary, middle, high school. And from there, of course, our Central Office Team is always supportive of our endeavors, especially when it comes to innovation. So they will greenlight the proposal, hopefully, in many of the situations so far, that's been the case. And then what happens from there is the Empower Edison Team, the consultants of these wonderful women that I get to work with, and will reintroduce. And what better way to celebrate Women's History Month than with a group of powerful women? Kristin Tissoy, Supervisor of Special Programs. Christina Hughes, Staff Development Trainer. Nicole Halpin, Supervisor of CTE. Samantha Grimaldi, Supervisor of Middle School Mathematics. And Jen Fisher, Elementary Assistant Principal. Working with these women has been an absolute privilege, and having each of them serve as consultants for the work that we're doing, and I'll share that with you momentarily, has been tremendous. So what we're doing is, as I mentioned, serving as consultants for other administrators throughout the district who are looking to innovate, who are looking to take ideas that they have and bring them to life. So some of the specific projects that we've worked on so far, and when I tell you, we literally just started this process in January, and already business is booming. We have three different projects that we've looked to develop. The first, the one that we just presented, the North Star Presentation, and that is based on the pillar of engagement, and that was led by Samantha Grimaldi. We also consulted with the Programs and Pathways pillar with Dr. Fay Kim for the Biomedical Science Academy. And then finally, the Portrait of a Graduate Project, Edison 360, led by team member and assistant principal, Ken Blakesky. So those are three projects that we've already looked to help consult and develop. Our role as consultants, we offer resources, support, we ask the hard questions, we serve as the liaison in many situations to provide communication to all stakeholders. And we really just looked to make the six-week process one that's very smooth. In addition to the three projects that we've looked to develop, we now have two that are in the works. We have one under the pillar of engagement with team leader Narav Lad, and then we also have one under the pillar of wellness, led by Principal Michael Duggan. So we're very, very excited about the work that we're doing. We hope to continue in the same trajectory. Right now, we're working with administrators, but our hope is that we're going to expand in our scope and sequence, so that we continue to work not just with administrators, but then also having our teachers join within our innovation and our student population as well. We're thrilled to be able to oversee this endeavor of Empower Edison. We're looking to ignite innovation and inspire impact, and that's the true story of Empower Edison. Thank you.
Great job, great job. Thank you. Thank you all for the presentations. Now, we're gonna have Mr. Cohen to come and present the Computer Science Academy. And everyone knew that we have already launched the Biomedical Academy, and this is a new academy that's coming up this September. So, you know, joining him is Mrs. Shannon Penn. She is the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, and we'll let her kick off this presentation. Shannon?
Thank you. Wow, it's so cool to stand here on this side. This next presentation has a special meaning to me, because as a computer science major and a software engineer for over 20 years, I've seen firsthand how computer science and AI reshape the world. So, and also as a parent in this district for 10-plus years, I've seen the growing interest and passion of our students for this field. This is why this new year, this year, this new board initiated this Computer Science AI Academy. It's gonna be introduced in both Edison High and JP, and it's gonna be open to all interested students. And now I'm gonna turn the stage over to Mr. Cohen, who's gonna share more details about this academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pang, and thank you to the Board, and thank you, special thanks to the Curriculum Committee for all the collaboration in this and the opportunity to talk to the community about a really exciting program that we're creating. I also want to give special thanks to our Programs and Pathways Chairs with Ms. Baninda Goomer and Nicole Halpin. Working with Nicole in this collaboration, it's really a school, like a community-wide collaboration this has been, but it's a product of a lot of background work she's been doing for many, many years, to build a lot of, lot of incredible coursework that are lined up, that are gonna set our kids up now for incredible success. This is actually the second of many, 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 many exciting things that are coming out of Programs and Pathways, and I'm excited to be able to talk to you about this tonight. So why would Edison create a Computer Science Academy? And as Mrs. Pang talked about, you know, computer science drives so much innovation that occurs, not just in computer science, but across industries, right? And I also want to take this opportunity to give a shout-out to our new North Star. If we're talking about empowering learners to shape the world with knowledge, purpose, and passion, this is a great way. Computer science is a great way to do that, right? So now we have innovators that are empowering the world and changing the world for the better through many, many different ways in which computer science enables that pathway. So it could be through AI, machine learning, cybersecurity touches everything, app and software is part of everyone's lives, data and analytics, the sky's the limit. So why should a current 8th grader in Edison consider this to start off as their high school pathway? So there's a number of reasons why this will give a unique learning experience and prepare them for big-time success in college and career. They can graduate with an industry certificate or credential in computer science. They'll gain competitive really advanced coursework within the industry, and get hands-on experience in things like programming and software development, and whatever emerging technologies come in as well, we'll be able to bring it in and make it part of the experience. They'll have real-world experience options. We can provide the course in which kids can get credit for an internship to prepare them for real-world workplace skills in the field of computer science, and then they can seek out a unique internship that matches their interests and matches their schedule, and get credit. And/or they can also dive deep into research in the field through AP Seminar and Capstone Research, which the teachers do a great job teaching the kids how to really, really dig deep and get an in-depth, expert-type level of knowledge about whatever they're studying. deep and get an in-depth, expert-type level of knowledge about whatever they're studying. So in this case, they can get really deep with their interest in computer science. So how can you be a part of this? For many of our students, they're already enrolled. As Mrs. Penn said, this is going to be an option for anyone who's really passionate about this. Some students, if you're, if we have ninth graders already either in honors Java or AP Computer Science Principles, they are already on the pathway towards all those opportunities that we talked about. If they're not, then all they need to do is will be able to reach out to the guidance office and express their interest in switching their elective to either honors Java, or if they would like to take Computer Science Principles as a freshman, then they can show that they've met that eligibility. If they have not met that eligibility, which means they've either placed out of Python through a placement test, that's fine. If they, we're going to give another placement test, they can pass that and become eligible. Or if not, that's okay. They can take a summer Python course that we'll offer, and through, working through guidance, we'll make sure that they have the opportunity. There's a lot of exciting courses that are in place and that will be in place as part of the experience. A number of AP courses, we're really excited to be kicking off, AB Cybersecurity, and, you know, giving the students the opportunity to get their hands dirty with the advanced robotics courses that we offer, which are incredibly exciting. Our kids are doing incredible things with the robotics. And then, of course, they can dive deeper with the Capstone and Pylon, some, a number of different electives that we'll be able to offer down the road. So there is more to come. We, by the end of this week, will send out information to all parents about how you can be part of this program. We are not there yet, so if you're excited, that's wonderful, but don't start calling the guidance office tomorrow. Please wait, give us the chance. We're going to put it all in a package for you. It'll go up on our website, it'll be really accessible. If you have the information you need, there's no deadline yet, there's plenty of time. So on Friday, we'll be able to send out all the information, and we'll be able to kick off this wonderful, exciting opportunity for Edison's students. That's it.
Okay, so I just want to emphasize that, you know, this academy is going to be in both high schools, both high schools. And as you can see, there are possible pathways for the current ninth graders. It's not only just for the incoming freshmen in the high schools, there's a pathway for the, you know, current ninth graders as well. So just wait till Friday, and, you know, if your kid is interested in that, and check the emails. There's some other things that I want to mention that it's probably to mention later on in the Curriculum Committee report, is beside these three academies, we have the STEM Academy, which is already in Edison High. This year, we doubled the enrollment from 24 to 48, and we have 24 students in the Biomedical Academy, and now this is the third academy, Computer Science and AI. And, you know, when we hired Dr. Alderelli, when we interviewed him, and one of the things he mentioned is Edison is doing so well that we need to get Edison on the map, okay? So what we are doing this year with this Curriculum Committee is we are setting up the map for the New Jersey School District. There are other pathways that, you know, I do not want to steal the thunder from Shannon, and just want to mention a couple of them. You know, we're not only taking care of the kids who are high performers, we're also looking for the kids who are not, possibly not going to college. So we have automobile repair, esports, fashion, interior design, and all of that. So I'll let Shannon go through that when she have her, you know, reports. So that's my board member, board president report, so that, okay, that plays into it. So again, I just want to thank the administration team, especially Mr. Cohen and the supervisors, and the Curriculum Committee, you know, and the leadership, Shannon Penn, and Visho, Ronik, and Chris, who worked hard, and we know we push you guys very hard, okay? But, you know, we only have limited time with the new board, and I'm glad that we're able to achieve, you know, these three academies that, you know, we're able to deliver for September. And there'll be more news coming up, and for the next year, be more exciting news for the academic curriculum improvements that we're going to do for Edison. Just remember, what we are coming up, we are the map for the school district. Everyone's going to follow us, all right? Thank you very much. With that said, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shi. I'm going to keep my comments brief. I just do, I want to thank all of the administrators who presented this evening. Really proud to sit up here and watch a lot of the hard work and the messaging that's been coming out through our administrative team meetings come to fruition. And the goal is not to stop there, right? Obviously, as we are modeling these pieces through our administrative team, and then the goal is to trickle this out to our building levels, right? So that we have our teachers, our paraprofessionals, all members of the organization working on problems in order to make things better, right? And do so in short design sprints, focusing on aspects of our strategic plan. And the most important piece about all of these, I think for the board's understanding, is that we measure all of it, right? Because that shows a level of importance. By measuring each individual component of the plan to make sure that it's effective and constantly tweaking it is the hallmark of all great organizations. And somebody reminded me today, right, you know, our vision is 2030, you know, we're five years away currently from hitting all of our goals, and I think we're doing a really, really great job with it, and I thank everybody for their support and relationship to that. The last thing I wanted to mention, I think this is the last board meeting before spring break, so for those of you, I hope you have a wonderful time with family and friends. Hopefully, you're able to get away. And that is the conclusion of my comments this evening, Mr. Shi.
Thank you very much. Now, we have the Student Council Representatives. I see Derek go there, so go ahead.
All right. Hey, everyone. This past month, Edison High has seen a nice period of successful school events. We've had two sports tournaments, with the first one being ping pong, the second one basketball, both of which went smoothly with solid turnouts. And after, the theater department, after months of preparing the show, they perform their annual musical. And I can say, after watching every show at EHS for the past four years, I can't think of one that I enjoyed more than this past one of the Adams family. So well done to all who are involved in its production. In athletics, we just had varsity awards night last week where we recognized the immense success of our winter athletes one last time. And now, spring sports are getting started with this week. Teams finishing up their scrimmages before the regular season officially begins next week. There's a lot of promise across all teams this year, including an entire returning squad of volleyball players from a team that went 19 and 9 and 11 and 1 in the White Division last year, so they're looking good. And the baseball team, who went 6 and 12 last year, is bringing back most of their featured pitchers and hitters. So lots to be excited about there. Coming up soon, for Student Council, we're working on creating a new event, the Teacher Lip Sync Battle, where we hope to have teachers like Missy Okem and Miss Frey doing choreographed dancing for the entertainment of our students on stage for the school. And in other news, we're in peak college decision, college decision season right now, so my fingers are crossed alongside with the rest of my classmates as we hear back from different universities. And to my fellow seniors, remember that the decision that you get from, like, your top school, or whatever top schools, that doesn't define your worth, obviously, as a student, and that when it comes down to, when you're making your decision between your top options, it's smart, especially with the current state of the economy and of education in America right now, to make sure that the financial aspect of it is a top priority, make sure you're doing what's best for your future, what's smartest to set you up for success down the road. So good luck to all seniors hearing their application decisions. That's all I have for now. Have a happy spring break.
Thank you very much, Derek. You brought up a very important, you know, aspect, financial aspect, right? So, you know, students, you know, please consider how much tuition is every year for some of these colleges. A lot of the colleges are equally, you know, competitive, and when you graduate from those colleges, it doesn't really matter. So, yeah, keep those financial aspects in your mind. All right, thank you for the goodbyes. Yeah, well said.
I also, you asked me last time to get...
Yes.
Feedback.
I was going to ask you that.
Yeah, so I have, I have the results I could share now, some of them.
Yes, you want to share in public or send me email, whatever you want to do.
What?
Go, whatever.
Should I?
Yes, please.
So I asked the staff at Edison High School about their thoughts on the new phone policy we have in the school, where students cannot have their phones out in class or else it'll be taken away to the, to the office for the day. So when asked to rate the approval of, their approval of Mr. Ross's new phone policy, out of 55 people, 74% said they rated 10 out of 10 their approval. And then the other responses were all, were eight and nine. Teachers rated their students' overall willingness to comply with the policy, and that varied, the majority being seven to eight, but we also had plenty that were two, three, and four. Those teachers especially said were in their, their lower classes, they saw lower willingness to comply with it. Out of the 54 responses, 54 said that they feel the policy's implementation was necessary for classrooms, and 90.7% noticed an increase in attention and focus from the students under the new policy. That's what I guess.
Thank you so much. Good, good statistics. Right, it's totally different from the student's perspective a little bit, right?
Completely opposite, yeah.
So it's really, really appreciated, it's firsthand information. If you don't mind, if you can send me, I'd like to see the actual numbers, and that's great. Thank you, Mr. Ross, for introducing the policy, right? So we don't see any JP students here, so if you want to go home, do your homework, feel free. If you want to stay, feel free to stay.
Let's go save money.
All right. Okay, so now let's move out, and we are going to open up for public comments for resolutions only. So anyone, public comments, resolutions only. Okay? Matt?
Matt Revneck, ETA President. I'm up here to question the...
Matt?
Yes.
Up, up, up. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Up here to question, the board has on your agenda about getting rid of basically the brokers. Very disappointed to find this out about 5:00 this afternoon. Like it or not, my members and the members here contribute about $10 million toward the insurance, which I believe is about 23% of the funding, so we are stakeholders in this as well. I'm just curious, because it says effective immediately, what happens until you hire a new broker over the next couple of months when my members have issues? The brokers have been taking care of our issues. In fact, I got one today that was denied twice and basically set up in a meeting with the broker, my member, and Horizon, and it was fixed today. So disregarding the brokers at this point without having something in place to deal with issues that arise is basically irresponsible. I don't understand the purpose at this point, maybe someone can shed light on that. But I also feel slighted. I'm not going to speak for Mr. Ross. I also did talk to Brian Ferry, who represents the bus drivers and custodians. He was, he didn't know anything about it either. One of the things that has always happened in the past when a move like this was made is that we were bought into it because we are a stakeholder. When you went to self-insured years ago when brokers were changed or insurance plans were changed, at least we were made aware of it, because at 5:00 this evening, my phone started to buzz off the hook, and I didn't have answers because I knew nothing about it. So I'd appreciate, you know, some kind of response to that, what the plan is moving forward. Without brokers, we've had many prescription issues. Somebody's sitting in the audience called me today about a prescription issue. Like I said, we've had medical situations being denied. One of my executive board members had one a couple of weeks ago and ended up in a hospital when it should have been approved. It's not going to help if we don't have someone to turn to. And I do want to comment because Ms. Mattson is the district person for insurance, and she's been great to work with, but she does not have that relationship like the brokers have with the insurance companies. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. So you want to talk about the legal aspect of it?
So if the resolution that we have on the agenda passes, the next resolution on the agenda is to go back out for competitive contracting, discussion with the business administrator. We can keep the deadline to 20-day response time, which is by statute, and then the board may appoint immediately thereafter. So we're looking at about three weeks. The issue, there's a issue with the wording of the resolution that adopted the contracts, that approved, ratified the contracts, and we're looking to rectify that.
Thank you. So the main reason is that the district signed a three-year contract with all three brokers, and we never do that. When you sign a three-year contract, people get comfortable. And, you know, we all know that we have lost some state aid, and we're tightening our belt, so, you know, we tried to get out of this three-year contract. It is possible, it could be the same vendor coming back, but I just want to get out of the three-year contract so we're not locked in. You know, when, when, excuse me, I have the floor, be respectful, okay? You want to be respectful, be respectful. Okay, so keep the voice down, okay? So, you know, we never signed a three-year contract. I spoke to the board president. Yeah, so, so the purpose is, we want to get out of a three-year contract, and so we can have them work harder for us. And one of the contracts actually has a automatic renew in the fourth year, which is not executable. And unfortunately, if you want to get out of the contract, this is the way to do, and we try to make it as less painful as possible. As far as the concerns, it's a $45 million business, and if any of the brokers want to work with the district, they're going to work with us. So that's my answer. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, this is going to be a long one, so I apologize. Brian Rivera, Edison. So, if the Board of Education eliminates the health insurance broker, it would have serious consequences for the district's 4,500 staff members. The 4,500 staff members that feed, supervise, drive, coach, mentor, and teach our students. This will cause a disruption in the coverage and benefits for our frontliners, all for politics. Staff may experience lapses in coverage, delays in claims processing, or issues accessing healthcare services. Essential benefits could be altered or removed without employees fully understanding the changes. Eliminating the broker could jeopardize the well-being of thousands of employees and create long-term financial and legal risks for the district. I want to remind this board, because five of them still sit on it, that the selection process for the brokers was entirely managed by the superintendent and his team. We had no say on it. This was his recommendations. They developed the rubrics, the criteria for the selection, and all information and recommendations was shared with the board members. If you did not read it or check your email, then shame on you. Stop checking your phone, pay attention. The board filed the superintendent's recommendations and approved the decision accordingly. Dr. Alderelli sent every contract, we read the contract, he suggested a three-year term, and we voted yes on it. Now all of a sudden, the board changes, and, oh, we never did this before, so now we have to change it. No, that was the superintendent and his team's recommendation, the individual that leads our school district. That's the problem with this board. You don't lead the school district, it's the superintendent. So Dr. Alderelli, I got a bunch of questions for you, and I know they're not going to be answered, so when I rebuttal, I'm going to restate them again. Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth, how are our current health and risk brokers' performance? How are they performing? Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth, is it your recommendation to part ways with the current brokers? Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth, is this, if this is approved tonight, how does this affect employees in our district? Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth, what are some of the consequences if this action takes place? Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth, and Mr. Roth, is this even legal? Is this your legal opinion that we are not in breach of contract, and can we be sued? Mr. Roth, a board member told me that this is your recommendation, that you want this done. Can you please explain? Can you please explain, um, to us your logic? So, when we approve this, the following motion to approve insurance consultants, in accordance to eighteen A, eighteen A dash A forty-two, award contract to the following firms to provide insurance consulting services per the specification CC twenty-four dash nineteen. Risk manager, Brandon Brown. Medical broker, Doyle Alliance Group. Prescription broker, Assured Partners. The vote, yes. Mr. Lugo, yes. Anjana Patel, yes. Vishal Patel, yes. Mr. Snyder, yes. Mrs. White, yes. Mrs. Peng, yes. Mr. Romano, yes. Mr. Patel. Everybody voted yes. Now, suddenly, we wanna change it. Now, if you look at contr, contract laws, Article ten, contracts extending beyond the fiscal year, I got this from my board, my, uh, superintendent friends and my business administrator friends, you guys know who they are. Article ten, contracts extending beyond the fiscal year, eighteen A, eighteen A forty-two. All contracts for the provision or performance of goods or services shall be awarded a period not to exceed twenty-four consecutive months. Accepted contracts for professional services pursuant to paragraph of subscription of NJS eighteen A, eighteen A five, shall be awarded for a period not to exceed twelve consecutive months. Any board education may award or contract for longer periods of time as followed. Again, award a contract for longer periods of time, which goes under, under Public School Contract eighteen A, eighteen A forty-two. Letter E, insurance, including the purchase of insurance coverages, insurance consultant or administrative services, including participation in joint self-insurance fund, risk management program, or related services provided by a school board insurance group, or participation in insurance fund established by County Pursuit, NJS forty-eight, ten dash six, or a joint insurance fund established Pursuit, PL nineteen eighty-three, C three seventy-two, C forty-eight dash ten thirty-six, Exquire, for any term not more than three years. So, we were allowed to do three years. And now, it's the superintendent's recommendation, and we all voted yes. Now, Brown and Brown, Assured Partners, and DAG Service Agreement, they all have termination clauses. And when it comes to termination clauses, if the, if the contract requires just cause, the board must, must document reasons such as poor performance, failure to meet obligations, or conflicts of interest. Now, my questions, here's numbers, uh, eight, nine, and ten for you. What is the just cause for termination of Brown and Brown? What is the just cause for termination of Assured Partners? What is the just cause of termination of DAG Service Agreement? 'Cause if you don't have just cause, Mr. Roth, they could sue us, correct? Okay, thanks. Cost summary provided, again, all the documents that Mr. Alderelli served with the entire board, that people probably did not read, but they did their own rubric, and they gave us the cost of each. Brown and Brown was a hundred and eighty-five thousand for health broker. Assured Partners was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Doyle Alliance was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, and Alliance was one seventy-five. So, Doyle wasn't even the highest, it was the third. And then, for risk manager, it doesn't even matter, 'cause it's standard per S, for NJ Sig. So, I understand why we're looking into this. Purely, this is politics, somebody has owed something, and I wanna get to the bottom of this. And I hope you all other vote no on this, or at least table it to have a discussion, 'cause what you're doing is putting our staff members in jeopardy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, the short answer is, the resolution was deficient. And, uh, the, the, all the staff will be covered, uh, with insurance, doesn't say they don't, it's not that they don't have insurance. And, um, you know, as I said, with a forty million dollar business, uh, everyone wants, will work with us. So, uh, we'll make it work. The only thing we can do to get out of the three-year contract is by, you know, because, because, it, it, excuse me, it, the resolution is deficient. Thank you. Anybody else?
Beth Chalky, fifteen Midwood Avenue. I was giving up for Lent that I wasn't gonna get up here and speak, but I just have to on this. Please forgive me. I understand what you guys are saying about, you know, the broker and the three-year contract or whatever, I wasn't aware of that. My concerns are, as a member, and, you know, I'll be honest, I have some issues where I've had to deal with our brokers this year, for, you know, um, prescriptions and medical things through Blue Cross Blue Shield. They have been helpful at times, you know, not as timely as I would've liked, but they have gotten better, and I've gotten what I've needed. My concern now is, this here says, if you vote on it tonight, it's immediate termination of this. These brokers are working with me, as well as other members, I'm sure, right now, trying to rectify issues that we have with our plan and stuff. So, that means you're leaving myself, as well as our members, hanging with, you know, getting things straightened out for our medical care at this moment. Is this something that has to be done right now, or it can't wait closer to when we would usually negotiate? You know, for the insurance brokers? 'Cause how long exactly is this gonna take us to get, like, new people in place? Is it something immediate in the next week, or we're gonna have to at least wait till April or May, before you, you know, before you put out bids for new, um, brokers for us, as well as, you know, when they start? Those are just, I guess, my questions, 'cause, you know, we're gonna leave a lot of members, as well as myself, hanging, 'cause I'm sure, once they find out, if, you know, they're terminated tonight, I'm not gonna get any return, you know, resolutions from them, at that point. So, just, you know, what's the timeline for getting new brokers, interviewing them, and actually getting them in place to help us? Because being self-insured, everything's brought back into house. Carolyn Mattson is fabulous. Our administrators up there have been fabulous in helping me with stuff, but they can only do so much. So, just, you know, what's the timeline for this, so that, you know, we can go back to the members and say, like, hey, you know, yes, there is more help for us to get, thank you.
Thank you. Our attorney already responded, um, you know, the timing. And just wanna make sure that, that you have full access to any of the insurance companies, and you are all covered by the insurance company, so, that's what it is. Any other public comments? Yes?
Hello, Carrie Colletto, just a quick question. As you know, if our members have a medical issue, it's often on an urgent basis, so they can't wait three weeks, three months, however long, to get an answer. So, if somebody has an issue tomorrow, who do they call? If they can't call the broker, who should they contact?
That's it?
That's it.
Carrier. Okay. Again, you have full, you have full access to the insurance, and, uh, everybody's covered. Any others? Okay, Matt? Do you have any other first timers?
Sorry.
No first timers?
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no one's denying access to the coverage. We know the coverage isn't changing. What we're saying is, when issues arise, because our insurance companies play god and deny things, who the hell do my members reach out to? That's the question. If there's no broker in place, who takes care of the problems for them, when you're missing a drug that you need, and it's being denied? Or you're having a medical procedure, like my one member did, that had to be put off to August, because it wasn't approved, it got canceled, so two weeks later, she ended up in a hospital, having the procedure done anyway, but they had to pay for two days in a hospital, rather than, in basically, a, a day situation. That's our question. No one's denying or questioning a break in the coverage. What we're saying is a break in the service, and there's three aspects to it. There's the cost, there's the medical coverage, and then, there's the service provider. And quite honestly, if we're not getting the service provided, that's part of what we pay for. And if people have issues and they're not getting them rectified, that's a problem. So, we wanna know who it is that we reach out to, our members reach out to, when these problems arise. I went through it myself. I had a knee surgery denied, and six months later, had to have a knee replacement, because it was denied. So, these things arise on a daily basis, you may not be familiar, 'cause you're not dealing with it, we are. And that's the problem, that's the question we're asking, not about that there's a break in the coverage, or a change in the coverage itself. But these outside corporations, like Evercore and Horizon, all they do is say, no, denied, 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 and you're in a battle to fight it. The question is, who do we get to fight that battle with us? Because when you call the insurance company yourself, you're getting, nope, denied, and they read a script. It's a script they're reading from. Our brokers have been great with doing those things. I don't give a damn who you have as a broker, as long as they do their job, and they're fiscally the right fit for the district, I don't care. We've had the brokers, the broker you just replaced last time was, did a great job. I know there were some other issues on your part. With our people, they were great. But, we can't have a break in terms of our members getting what they're entitled to, what they're paying for. That's the problem.
Thank you, I think the, I already answered the questions, uh, you call the insurance company. Thank you, the carrier. Anybody else? Okay, Brian, come back.
Board President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, Brian, before your rebuttal, I would like to ask you, you just mentioned, you just told the entire public that some board member told you, this is actually our attorney's suggestion, this has nothing to do with the insurance. I just wonder, would you mind to tell us who that board member is?
If that board member wants to say something, he can.
Okay, so, just so you know, this whole discussion is in a closed session, it's confidential information. And you just told the public that one board member told you this confidential information totally violates the ethic charge of disclosing a confidential information discussed in closed session.
Well...
I'm surprised that you did not know this, as a former board member?
I don't know what's disgusting, I don't know what's disgusting.
Let me finish first.
Mr. President, this is not a back and forth.
Yes.
Yes, I'm not asking you to respond, I'm just saying, you, I'm surprised that you didn't know this is closed session information that's being disclosed to you.
I know it's closed session.
And, uh, as a former board member, this is just surprising, maybe this is a practice you used to have.
Dude, you're on your cell phone texting everybody on WhatsApp.
Okay, wait, 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 stop, stop. Yeah, let him, let him, let him sit three minutes, and then we can go from there.
So, as I entered today, I asked somebody, whose bright idea was this? And they said, this was the recommendation from the attorney. So, there's your answer. 'Cause the idea sucks, it's horrible.
That's not my question.
Well, I just answered it. So, anyway, it's my time to rebuttal. I think the idea is horrible. I hope board members that are new actually are paying attention and listening, but I'm going back to my ten questions that were not answered. So, Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth, how are our current health and risk, uh, brokers performing? How are they performing? Are you satisfied with their work? Number two, Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth, is it your recommendation to part ways with our current brokers? You are the leaders of our district. What are your recommendations? Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth, if this is approved tonight, how does this affect the employees of the district? Saying, making them to go out of their ways, to tell them to contact the health insurer, is ridiculous. They pay for this assistance, and they deserve it. God forbid, someone doesn't get their medication, they get sick, they die, are we liable? Because we don't have a broker. Again, politics. Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth, and Mr. Roth, is this even legal? Is this your legal opinion, that we are not in breach of contract, and we could be sued? Again, there's no just cause to get rid of these individuals. You don't like the wording of a resolution, well, guess what? It's legal. I read the contract of law to you all, it's legal. The fact that he cited that statute, it's legal. Mr. Roth, he, uh, ch, 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 to the board. Again, for just cause, what is the just cause for termination of Brown and Brown? What is the just cause for termination of Assured Partners? What is the just cause for termination of DAG Services Agreement? Again, every board member got this information. Everybody got the contracts, everybody got the specs, everybody knew it was a three-year contract, if you read it. What tells me this, is you did not read it. Voted yes, voted yes, voted yes, voted yes, voted yes, voted yes. All of yous voted yes for this. Suddenly, change of board, election seasons are coming, gotten higher money, it's dried up, we need to find some stuff. The reality, the board made a decision, the, the people are performing well, you're putting our people at risk. Make a conscious decision, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Now, I see in this that it says by no, um, by June first, we should have a new broker. That leaves us without a broker, me as a member, and my colleagues, and everybody else who works for this district, who has these insurance plans, without somebody to aid us. There's a lot of, um, employees here, we're on all different plans, depending on how long we've been here, what plan you choose to take. Yes, we do have insurance, yes, we do have, um, prescription people that we can call. But I know firsthand, and I'm gonna tell you all, I have, you know, tried to resolve issues myself, a lot of times, 'cause I've had a lot of issues. And I'll be honest, going back with my alopecia, losing my hair, and trying that for years. Getting on the phone to call either Blue Cross or Blue Shield, or Express Scripts, or USRX Care, because if your prescription's more than twenty-five hundred dollars a month, you have to reach out to them. It is awful. You get the runaround, you get somebody reading the script, nobody gets back to you, nobody will give you a reference number, and you go in circles and circles. You can't get a supervisor, nobody wants to hear it, 'cause all to them it is about their bottom line. And I understand they're corporations, they wanna make money. Us having brokers in place, kind of is a safety net, and a help to all of, myself, as well as all of our members, who are insured through the district. And not having them, they have the access to hire people at the insurance companies and the prescription places, that we don't have access to. So, we're not getting resolutions directly as a member calling them. That's why we pay for these brokers. And you're leaving us three months without anybody to help us? It's very upsetting and concerning. So, please, I understand if you do wanna change brokers, but do it at a time where you're not leaving us hanging for, you know, three months out of the year, without somebody to help us. Thank you, please reconsider.
Thank you. So, just, uh, you know, uh, wanna say that, that, you know, Dr. Alderelli, we're gonna send a email to the staff, as to whom to contact, um, you know, during this short, very, very short period of time, it's not to June first, okay? It's like to June thirtieth, whatever you're saying. So, um, they will have it. There are two resolutions.
There's, there's, there's two resolutions, the goal of the board is to, if the resolutions pass, the goal of the board is to have a contract from, as soon as the board passes the resolution, to May thirty of twenty twenty-five, and then, a full year...
June thirty?
No, May thirty, twenty twenty, and then, June first, twenty twenty-five, through May thirty, twenty twenty-five. And that's the reason that the PNC, uh, property and casualty brokers, uh, contract runs with the company, with the PNC company, runs from, uh, we have to have a broker of record as of June ten, of every year. So, this way, the board ensures that the broker that is getting paid for it, will be doing the work as well.
Yeah, the key answer is, the resolution was deficient, so, that's your answer for it, okay? Alright, any other public comments? See none? Can I have a motion to close public comments? Okay? Okay? Motion. Ralph Erko and Ronik Patel. Okay. So, all in favor? Alright, okay. Alright, so, we're gonna move on. Can I have a motion to approve personnel agenda? Okay? Mr. White, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Vishal Patel. Uh, Rocco, please.
Mr. Erko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronik Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion to approve administration curriculum instructions and pupil special services?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Erko?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Vishal Patel.
Mr. Erko. Mr. Erico.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Pang.
Yes.
Vice President Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now can I have a motion to approve our finance resolutions?
Motion.
Can we discuss this first since there's something, is there a new resolution?
Yeah.
We have that motion, the second put on the floor, then you can have.
Then you have a second.
Yeah, you, okay. Vishal Patel and Mr. Romano. For second, right?
Yes, I did.
Yes. Okay, yeah, Chris.
Thank you. So I'd like to start, Mr. Roth, I actually have a question about this. Is it your legal opinion that this does not breach our contracts? Like, if we were to take action, is it your legal opinion that this would not breach our contracts with these brokers that we have currently?
I don't like offering legal opinions in public, but the response is that the resolution that was adopting the three broker agreements was void at the outset because the resolution in and of itself was improper. So therefore, because it's improper, it's, the contracts could not have been appropriately adopted.
Okay. Can we get a second opinion on that? Because I actually showed that resolution to other attorneys in municipal law. They see nothing wrong with it. This is the only, honestly, yourself and President Shi are the only two people that I'm hearing from that there's something wrong with this resolution. Everybody else that I've actually showed this to had no issues with it. Can we get a second opinion?
It's not on me, sir. That's on the board.
I'd like to make a motion to get a second opinion.
I'd second that. Parliamentarian, I believe we have an original motion on the floor.
This is superseding, well, this is superseding motion.
Okay.
So that means that we have a, we have a first, we have a second, and we can, you know, we can take, and just for the record, and make sure the record's clear, there's a motion to get a second opinion that's not staying, you'd have to get the motion to remove it.
I do understand that.
All right, I just want to make sure we're all on the, the board understands it. You may, and Ms. Lugo may, but I want to make sure the whole board understands. A motion, the motion on the floor right now, unless I'm wrong.
No, 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 you're absolutely 100% right.
Is just to receive a second opinion, not tabling or pushing aside the motion that's currently part of the finance package. Is that accurate?
Mr. Shi, can I respond?
Yes.
In other words, before we started, if someone said, I'd like to table Section C of Finance, then that can be done then instead of now. Now it's too late.
Well, again, I just want to make sure I'm explaining the motion.
And I'm asking for your terminology. Do I ask, I, I should, should I have asked for that?
For a motion to, motion to table?
The motion to table number C.
And D, D has the resolution under procurement.
I don't have it in front of me. I'm trying to do both.
Yeah, D.
So.
D.
So let's stick with the first motion. The first motion is to get a second opinion. If you want to have a motion to table, even though it's moved, you can still move to table because there's a superseding resolution. So you can make a motion to table at any time. You'd have to take a motion to table and then get a second opinion and whatnot. But for right now, the only motion on the floor is to get a second opinion.
Okay. So then can I rephrase that and motion to table this until we get, and so we have time to get a second opinion on the resolution? I believe it's under procurement, D.
I don't know what the, I'm, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, the number.
Yep. It's D2 and 3.
What is it, John?
Mr. Toth.
John, what is it?
D2 and 3?
D, D?
D.
D2, okay. D3, okay. So you want, I'm sorry, Mr. Lugo, you want to amend your motion?
Amend the motion to actually have a table for this particular resolution dealing with the brokers.
Right, so if you put a motion on a table, it's got to be for a specific period of time. And so would you like, I need to, you need to articulate a time. When you put on a table, it's either an indefinite, which basically kills the motion, or for a definitive time period. So 30 days? What, next board meeting?
Well, 30 days, you're not going to get anything back in 30 days. I would actually say table it until? Three years.
Three years.
Well, once it passes this, the life of this board dies.
Okay.
So you can't do that.
Indefinite.
You can't do that.
Indefinite.
I'm sorry, sir?
Indefinite.
Well, that means it's, you're going to take, you're tabling until it dies. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
So Joe, you second it?
Oh, I, oh, yeah, absolutely, I'll second it.
Okay, all right. So Rocco, to table the, the resolution D.
Well, it's, it's, well, it?
No, no. It's. Section 4, light item D.
It's D2 and 3.
D2 and 3.
Do D2 and 3.
Okay, Rocco.
Mr. Erico.
No.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
No.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
No.
Mr. Romano.
No.
Ms. White.
All right, now we're voting to table this.
Table, yes.
And I'm going to say yes.
Ms. Pang.
No.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
No.
President Shi.
No.
Motion fails.
So now you're back to the, the superseding, I'm sorry, Mr. President, we're back to the original motion now that superseding motions are over.
And his motion is for finance.
Yeah, the entire finance section.
Sure. And I just have one more question, too, about just cause. Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth, do we have just cause to terminate these contracts?
It's already, it's already answered the motion. It's not, it's not.
Again, it's, this has nothing to do, it's go, it deals with the.
It deals with the wording. What you're saying, what you're saying is the wording was bad. That's what you're pointing to.
It has nothing to do with the terms of the contract.
Okay, but we still have signed contracts with companies.
Yes, and, okay. So you have a signed contract with the company, they got paid or have gotten paid under that contract. There's a legal theory called quantum merur, which means that you get what you pay for. So if you do some work and you can't agree on the contract, then the contractor's going to get paid for the work that was honestly performed. That's basically the theory of quantum merur. So the fact that they got, they were voiding the contract because it was void of an issue, the contract should never have been approved the way they were. If that's the case, then we go to the legal theory of quantum merur, which means that they got paid for what they did, but they won't get paid going forward.
Regardless of what?
So we never get to the terms of the contract.
So whatever, regardless of what that contract says?
Because the contract was void from the outset, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Shi. If the, if the contract was void from the onset?
Yes, sir.
Do we get all the money back?
No, that's what we just talked about, quantum merur. Work was performed and they, we have, we got services provided and they provide services.
When does, when does, when does the contract end as of our vote?
Yes, sir.
Tonight?
Yes.
And is there carryover?
Not according to the resolution, no, sir. Because if the, and there can't be.
If somebody broke.
And there can't be. Because if the void, the resolution was inappropriate to begin with, acknowledging the inappropriateness and allowing it to stand and perform work under that resolution would be inappropriate.
Okay, just as long as I understand that if somebody this afternoon fell down and broke their leg, it would be covered?
Well, the insurance is not affected. It's just whether as, the intermediary broker, if there is, if you need the intermediary broker, that when, they would not be there for the next 20 or 20 some, 20 some odd days.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I know when I'm voting on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Trying to explain it as best I can for you.
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Just to clarify, I know Mr. Rivera said, you know, someone in the parking lot, that was, that someone was me, Mrs. Pang. And I did not say that this was the recommendation of the attorney. I did say that the attorney did advise us that this contract was voted on incorrectly and that we could rescind the contract. The attorney doesn't tell us what to vote on or what contracts not to and vote yes or no, but I just wanted to clear up, to clear both of our names, that I had a very brief conversation with them saying, listen, as a board member, we have an attorney for a reason, and I listened to the attorney. And that was probably the extent of our conversation, Mrs. Pang.
Thank you, Ralph. I know it's not you. I'm sure it's not you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shi. Through you to the attorney. I, I have a thousand questions. Is there legal, is, is there an illegal, is there legal opinion that the contract was, was signed and it was agreed to by the lawyer that the board had? And if the, the contract was that bad, does the board have legal authority through, through a vote to attach the lawyer?
If I may, board members and Mr. President, I explained the resolution, I was, and the reason behind the resolution, I believe that's appropriate. Any other legal advice, if you want to adjourn to executive session to have further discussion on it, that's fine. I'll be more than happy to discuss it in there. Mr. Erico, only half, you only can listen to half of what I say.
Okay.
But if you want to just have any discussion in, any more legal advice, we should do that in executive session, not, not in public.
But then, are you, I'm sorry, then are you saying we should go into executive session now?
I'm saying that if you want to ask questions that offer more legal advice than explaining why the resolution is on the agenda, then we should go into executive session. Otherwise, the resolution, I explained the resolution, the resolution stands, it's been motioned and seconded, unless anyone has any legal, more legal questions beyond that, then we should go into exec. Otherwise, then the vote should be called.
So we already have the motion on the floor, so let's just go through it. But, you know, we have other discussions, we can talk to them afterwards.
Can you just explain what we're voting on now? Are we voting on?
We're voting for the entire resolution.
Are we voting for number four?
Yes.
Finance and facilities.
Yes, which is, my understanding is 1, 2, 3.
Everything.
Mine doesn't say 1, 2, 3. Mine says, I have 1, 2, public, finance facilities, 1, 2, 3, sir.
Procurement, that's procurement, you know, it's part D.
Okay, mine, mine are in, mine, mine are saying A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
It's part of D. It's part of D, the insurance.
Part of B, okay.
D, D.
D, D and David.
Part of D, okay, very good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we already have a motion? You have it, right? Okay, so Rocco, please.
Mr. Erico.
No.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
No.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
No, on the whole packet. Number four, the whole packet.
Noted. Ms. White.
All right, I'm going to vote no on D and yes to everything else.
Ms. Pang.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have our committee reports. We have a lot of them. So we're going to have Athletic Committee, stop with Mr. Erico.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. All right, in attendance, we had a meeting on March 4th, 4:00 PM at the Education Center. In attendance was myself, Vishal Patel, Shannon Pang, Dr. Huss, Dave Marzano, and Dave Sandell. We welcomed Mr. Marzano to his new position. We went over the many successes of the sports in the winter from both JP Stevens and Edison High School. There's like 15 or 20 of them here, so I don't want to mention them all, but almost every athletic sporting event had a success at both high schools. We discussed the spring sports coming season. In the past, we had some issues with busing and things like that. Both ADs said it has improved greatly over the last year, and we're going to be back into a full GMC schedule going forward instead of just playing our inter-middle school teams. The season start us on 3:10, which has passed already. Everyone's looking ready to go. Cricket update, Mr. Sandell did find interest at Edison High School and did find a coach that will work with them. I know this is very important to Mr. Vishal Patel. And at JP Stevens, we already have that going. Also, at our last meeting, and I think Mr. Patel is going to cover it in the, his report about the readjustment of the fields at Woodrow Wilson, and I think he's going to discuss that, so I'm not going to get into that and steal his thunder. Girls' flag football, JP Stevens going to pilot a program this spring. I think it's actually an NJ SIAA sport now, so they're going to pilot a program at JP Stevens and hopefully will also do that at Edison High. Update on the fields, construction is beginning. Tennis courts at JP Stevens are helpful for completion, are hopeful for completion by fall of 2025. In the meantime, they're going to play, I forget the name of the park that's over there. What's the name of the park that they, they play at?
The north side?
Yeah, the alternate site.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about, right? The AD did request porta potties because there's no bathrooms there, so we'll take care of that. Open discussion, incoming coaches and engagement, that was brought up by Mr. Patel, that how are we evaluating our coaches? How are we helping them to improve? How are we helping them to get better? We're not looking to make, you know, waves with any coaches, but if there's a topic that they need to maybe want to improve on, maybe we could offer some kind of staff development internally or externally, which is a great idea. The ADs did say they do written evaluations on every single coach every year, and some of them haven't been so pleasant and some have been great. So at least we know they're working on their evaluations. Coaches clinics that I just mentioned, a second trainer has been requested because with all the sports going on, the two high school trainers have to go to the two middle schools when they're playing sports at the same time. So if we can get a second trainer, basically to help out at the middle schools, that would be great, but that, we'll have to look into the budget for that. New gym at Edison High School was discussed. I would love to see a new gym there. In my opinion, it's pretty embarrassing to have a group four school with a gym that size. You could barely fit 200 people in there. If you go to South Brunswick, you go to Monroe, you go to these other school districts, they have tremendous gyms, and I think Dr. Alderelli agrees with us, but again, property, money, the whole bit is a tough issue. And we discussed sports bubbles, so something we could look at. Some other districts do it, so we're gonna keep looking into that and, and look if it's feasible and, you know, again, within our budget and means. And that concludes my report, Mr. Shi, thank you.
Thank you very much. So just that, you know, very long report, just a quick question. Middle school schedule return to GMC, we gonna do it next year?
Yes, yeah, we're gonna play all the middle county, middle six county districts and instead of just playing cross-town teams.
Okay, all right. So next, community relations, public advisory. Shen?
Sure, so, community relationship have a, have a committee meeting on February 27th from 6:30 to 8:30 at Ed Center. This is, attendees are Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Huss, Dr. Tuhi, Ms. Heather Daniel, myself, and Mr. Jerry Shi. As we noted in the last meeting, this committee serves as a bridge between our community and our school administration. We have implemented stages to engage our students and launched PALS, Parents United in Listening, Sharing, and Engaging, to foster parent involvement. On February 27th, we held our first PALS meeting, bringing together parents from nearly every school alongside with our committee and administration team for an open discussion on various school-related issues. Parents voiced their top concerns covering a wide range of topics from academic to technology use in classroom to school facilities, transportation, mental health, and communication with our staff. Questions were asked and answers are provided. The discussion remained frank, friendly, and most importantly, very constructive. Each participant shared their perspective, fostering open dialogue that deepens our understanding of each other's viewpoints. By acknowledging the challenges we all face, we strengthened our connections and most importantly, build trust. This is the true power of communications. This meeting was well organized with snacks and small goodie bags for parents to take home after it's adjourned at around 8:30. I would really like to extend my sincere gratitude to our administration team and the committee for staying late to accommodate our working parents. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it was a good meeting, really, so glad to see the engagement from the parents. So next, you have two more curriculum committee meeting reports.
Me again. Curriculum meeting, first one was held on February 27th from 4:00 to 5:30 PM at caucus room at Ed Center. Attendees are myself, Ronik Patel, Vishal Patel, Dr. Cohen, Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Huss, Ms. Heather Daniel, Dr. Fei Kim, and Ms. Meyer. We talked about the BioMed Academy. So we all know Middlesex County has six magnet schools. And each year, we're losing some of our top students to these schools. Edison High also has a well-established STEM academy for many years. And there has been increased demand for similar program at JP Stevens. So in response, our committee took the initiative to launch the Bio Academy Academy at JP this year. To highlight this Bio Academy, offer students advanced courses from ninth to 12th grade, including capstone project, research opportunities, and real-world experiences. Modeled after Edison High STEM Academy, this BioMed Academy is open to students from both high schools. Thanks to the dedication and hard work of our superintendent, Dr. Alderelli, our chief academic officer, Dr. Hope Cohen, JP Stevens principal, Dr. Fei Kim, and our science supervisor, Ms. Meyer. And Ms. Heather Daniel, this initiative has now come to a reality. During this meeting, Dr. Kim and Ms. Meyer delivered an excellent presentation on the program. The committee discussed various aspects in detail, including program size, timeline, application process, and placement criteria. To ensure that no talented student is overlooked due to a single test score, all the students are welcome to apply. And the selection will be based on seven placement criteria. In addition, multiple administrators will be involved at every stage, including the interviews, to maintain a fair and transparent process. Email was sent to all eighth, eighth grade, eighth graders in the district, encouraging them to apply. And we did receive a overwhelming positive response. This new academy really marks a pivotal moment for our district, in my mind, expanding the opportunity and raising our education standards to a new heights. And immediately after following, immediately following the launch of our BioMed Academy, the committee turned its focus to the next major initiative, the Computer Science and AI Academy, as we presented tonight. This academy will be available for both high school, eliminating the need for busing between campuses. This, similar to the Bio Academy, also give the students, provide the students with competitive edge and advanced coursework and hands-on experience on programming, software development, and emerging technologies. They can also earn a certificate or a credential to strengthen their college application and career perspective and gain real-world experience through seminars and capstone project and some industrial, industry-based internship. Dr. Cohen provided a comprehensive overview of the program, outlining the core structure, the potential certifications, and internship opportunities. The committee held an in-depth discussion on entrance criteria, which will include placement tests during the school year as well as a supplemental test, classes, and exams offered over the summer. We also discussed the computer science pathways. So for students interested in computer science but not yet commit, ready to commit to the CSAI Academy or those who have not yet passed the placement test, rest assured, we're not gonna close the door on the opportunity. That's why our committee, in collaboration with our administration team, have developed a new CS pathway. This pathway will allow students to take computer science courses in ninth grade, deepen their understanding of the subject, and if they choose, transition into the CS Academy in 10th or 11th grade. It also ensures the students can continue with their skills while keeping the option open to join the academy at a later stage. This committee envisioned computer science and AI as the next major driving force across our industry. Our goal is to extend this incredible opportunity to as many interested students as possible. We believe this initiative will establish Edison School District as a leader in the academy innovation, further solidifying our reputation for excellence and forward-thinking education. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is, as I said, you know, the, just head out for the information until Friday for the CS and AI Academy. And we're offering multiple paths to join the, the academy. So if you're in the CS path, you can still join, you know, the second year old. The people in the ninth grade, they have a possibility to join as well. So just stay tuned for the information, all right? So next up, we have the finance and facility. So Vishal.
Hello, we had a, two financial facility committee meeting this month. First one was on March 3rd at JP Stevens from 4:30 to 5:30. We discussed different financial item, we reviewed the audit reports, reviewed the surplus and reserve dollar that can be transferred to the next fiscal year. There is an excess surplus for 16.9 million budgeted for FY '26. And we have a remaining about 10 million estimated remaining there in the capital improvement budget. For fiscal year 2026, we reviewed the stated that was deducted or reduced by $2.8 million. We also discussed the pre-K program for FY '26 and how we're gonna, you know, plan and start the program. On the facility side, we reviewed the change order. There were no change order at the time. For Marshall's, Marshall's bid, DMR is preparing the new bid package. And they will send it out for the bid once NJDEP completes the review. And for fiscal year 2026, we also reviewed the capital projects that we have budgeted for FY '26, which are EHS Orchestra, EHS and JP Phone Systems, ES and JP Softball Fields, JP Access Roads, GM's Bus Stop and Parking, and AC at Washington and GMP. We also reviewed the healthcare budget for fiscal year 2025. We received the rebate of 1.4 million till date, anticipating to receive 1.5 million by the year, you know, by the time year ends. And we are looking at for fiscal year 2026, 3.75 million in rebate for the next fiscal year. The committee met again on March 18th from 4:30 to 5:30. The meeting started by reviewing the healthcare budget presented by Doyle Alliance Group. After that, we reviewed the 2026 budget, balanced at 0%. We also reviewed the capital reserve budget for 2026, which is going to be about $22 million. We discussed the land purchase around Talme and Coolidge. I think, you know, the entire board has been discussing it for a while. So we, you know, we bring some of the option whether you wanna purchase that land. Then we discussed the legal services, RFP, for general and special education legal counsel. And then we reviewed the budget statement that's, I don't know if it's already published in the Tap Info Edison Newsletter or the news, online, you know, news portal. Further, on the facility side, Marshall's bid is out on March 21st. JMI bid is under OSC review. And we had a one change order at JP that will be covered from the allowance for electric, gas, and technology upgrade. We also discussed the WWMS athletic field update. Few community leaders reached out to me, I guess, Sunday night, that saw the layout could cause harm to the school building. So I had a meeting with administration, you know, it was a lightning speed, you know, we met on Monday morning, reviewed that field arrangement and decided to, you know, make some changes in the arrangement so that we don't end up damaging any of the school property. And that's the end of my meeting minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, you're up again, food committee.
Cool, we had our first food services committee meeting on March 3rd at JP Stevens at 4:00 PM. In attendance were Vishal Patel, Mr. Ralph Eriko, Ms. Anjana Patel, Ms. Jackie, Mr. John Toad, Dr. Chris Huss, Ms. Almeda, and Mr. Giove. We reviewed the reports presented by Marshalls. And they said the participation of students across all schools have gone up for both breakfast and lunch. We reviewed some past due balances, which is about $220,000 across all the schools. Marshalls informed us that they can conduct periodic nutrition education during the school events. They gave some examples where they had, you know, side table during their school events, where they were educating students and parents about nutrition and good eating habits. They also informed us that they donated two carts to Edison High School. And they will be donating 5K scholarship to both EHS as well as JP High School this year as well, as they are doing every year. They also talked about some tryouts they did for samosas, excuse me. They did a tryout of one of the food items, samosas, at both the high school, which they said was successful. And they plan to roll it out across the secondary school in incoming months. And that concludes my meeting minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so just wanna, you know, highlight one thing here. That, you know, a food vendor is given a $5,000 scholarship, scholarship to both high schools. $5,000 scholarship to both high schools. This is, I call it giving back from these vendors. I hope that our other vendors will do the same. I know some are about doing it. And I hope more vendors will be participating in this and, and give back to the community. Okay, so next up, Special Ed, Ronik.
Hello, everybody. The Special Education Committee convened for two meetings, held on February 26th, 2025, and March 19th. In attendance at both meetings are myself, Mr. Ralph Eriko, Mrs. Virginia White, Mr. Joe Romano, Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Tuhi, Ms. Daniel, Dr. Huss, and Mr. Toad. During this meeting, the committee discussed pre-K placement procedures for the 2025 and 26 school year. It was confirmed that all current pre-K student enrolled in the Edison pre-K program will automatically receive a pre-K seat for September 2025 and will not be required to participate in district lottery process. All other student seeking pre-K placement must participate in the district lottery. Additional information regarding the lottery process is available on the district website. Please reach out to Dr. Tuhi or Ms. Netzel for any questions. The committee also received an update on the Edison Success Academy, which has been operating since September. The program has successfully provided educational services to students who needs, needs were not previously and adequately being met with the district. This initiative has resulted in a significant cost-saving for the district while supporting students in more inclusive and effective manner. And this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're open for public comments. So anyone, public comments or any issues? Yes, Anthony.
Anthony Mara, Five Coletto, Coeur d'Edison. I'm here speaking policy 5756, but before I start, I'm gonna compliment the board on this place. This is a nice place. First time I've ever been here. The cornerstone out front says it was built in 1960. That's over 60 years ago. From my brief encounter with this building, it's well-maintained, well-done. All right, let me get down to business, 5756. I've attended enough board meetings to hear something described as a portrait of a graduate. I wanna give you a portrait of two students in the Edison school system. Portrait one is a student born as a boy who grows up to be a man, or born as a girl, grows up to be a woman. That's portrait one. Portrait two is a transgender student. Portrait one, that student stands a much better chance of having children because he hasn't done any serious damage to his reproductive organs. Portrait two, the transgender student, oh, he's, he or she has done damage to his reproductive organs, either by surgery, hormone blockers, or whatever else is out there. Portrait one, that student has a lower risk of suicide as opposed to the portrait of the, the transgender student. The numbers are undeniable. Even the LGBT community doesn't deny it, that the transgender student has a higher risk of suicide. Now, what I want you to do, by the way, the, what I mentioned about having children, that's in the usual way. I know there's adoption of other methods. But the usual way, and we all know what that is, what I want you to do is to remove the label from portrait number two of the transgender student. You have a student who has increased risk of suicide and can't have children the usual way. Is that the kind of student we wanna foster in our school system? Absolutely not. I mean, do we want students, I'm sure all nine members of the board would say, no, no, suicide, that, that's, that's one of the, that's like the ultimate tragedy. But now super, now put back on the label of transgender student, oh, we have to permit this. We have to permit it. It's an ideology. That's nuts. Just because it's transgender, we have to tolerate increased suicide and our children doing harm to themselves? That's crazy. There is nothing in policy 5756 that violates New Jersey's law against discrimination. I've heard it said that if 5756 is eliminated, there's nothing left. We have no guidance. That's wrong. That's absolutely wrong. Teach the students the risks, the transgender students, the risk of adopting that lifestyle. I just mentioned some. I'm sure there's more I can't think of. Is that done here? I wonder. I wonder. The NCAA, National Collegiate Athletic Association, recently changed their policy to prohibit those born as men to compete with women. Now, that's a big organization. You've probably seen it in the news. They come, they've come to the common sense opinion that men should not be competing with women. Has the Board of Ed done that? Has the Edison Board of Ed done that? Obviously not. Boys competing with girls? Boys competing with girls? I sent you a video some time ago of a girl named Peyton McNabb. It's worth repeating because this is tragic. This girl was a high school student on a volleyball team where the other team, the competing team, had a transgender student. That student spiked the ball at her, hit her so hard, she suffered traumatic brain injury. She's not the same person anymore. Is that what we want in Edison? Do we have to wait for that to happen? You know, that kind of thing happens a lot in our society, whether it's just transgender. Do we have to wait for the drunk driver to kill someone before we do something? Well, we obviously have laws against it. Do we have to wait for the construction action before we fix that problem in the building? Do we have to wait for one of our girls to get hurt by a transgender student before we take action? I sure hope not. I mentioned before, you can't thumb your nose in God's face, and it's happening. God tells us, man remains stiff-necked after men rebukes will suddenly be destroyed without remedy. I want only the best for this board. This isn't me. This is God speaking. Unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be any fear of God on this board. God also said, have you not read, he created them from the beginning, made them male and female? For this reason, man shall leave his father and mother and be joined to his wife. Two shall become one flesh. In other words, two genders, that's it. Just doesn't seem to come across here. Your son or daughters decide to change gender, and you're kept in the dark. Is that what you want? You want the school board here to say, no, you're not going to be told? Phew. You'll be told about everything else. He's doing poorly in math, he's poor in English. You'll be told about that, but you can't be told about this? This has become, this has taken such high priority that it defies, it finds sound reason. Please abolish this policy and replace with a common sense policy where we teach our students the risk of living a transgender lifestyle. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Sue.
Susan Campione, Chairperson of the ETA Scholarship Committee. I just want to put it out there to any parents that are watching to make sure that your seniors go to the guidance office and ask not only for the ETA scholarship. There are some scholarships that are awarded by the committees, but other ones, the applications must be filled out. The ETA ones are due the end of April, and when I checked last week, there were no applications at either high school. I did contact the heads of guidance to make sure that they got them on the Google classrooms and are trying to get the word out. Maybe the principals can make announcements to remind the seniors to go and pick up applications. There's a lot of money out there. School is expensive. Make sure you fill them out. We can't award the money if we have no scholarship applications. Thank you.
Exactly. I was surprised, nobody applied. The ETA scholarship's a lot of money. So, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Very good evening to everybody here. I'm just here to request.
Name and address.
I just want to share that.
Name and address.
We need your name and town, ma'am.
Right, sorry. My name is Manisha Chavla. I'm wearing many hats tonight. I'm a parent and a teacher, and I love working with this district. My request, actually, I wanted to share a story. Recently, in twenty twenty four August and September beginning, I had a life and death situation out of nowhere. I was in the I C U for two weeks, and there were many, many procedures that were conducted on me, thankfully for the right reasons, because I'm here right alive. However, since then, September twenty four until now, I've been receiving a lot of medical bills, which are crossing two hundred thousand dollars. And I've been chasing horizon, left, right, center, but it's been quite difficult to get them, to get in touch with them and get the answers. But many of their, they keep denying the claims from the hospital, and I feel like I'm a mediator between the hospital and insurance. They need some information from the hospital, and then hospital needs something. It's just a lot. And I think the broker situation might help. That's what I think so. I trust that you will take the best decision for us, and that's my request, and that's all I wanted to let you know. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we will take, you know, the best decision for the staff.
In the back.
Yes.
Beth Talke, fifteen Midwood Avenue. I'm saddened by what happened with the vote tonight. I understand you want to change brokers. I have no issue with that as a taxpayer resident and an employee here. The issue is that you've left all of us employees of this district hanging now with nobody to help us. I've been receiving letters the last month from Evacor, which is a subsidiary of Blue Cross Blue Shield, going back from two thousand twenty one, requesting money from a doctor's visit on January seventeenth of that year, but it has no reference number, no doctor's number. When I call them, and the portals for Blue Cross Blue Shield don't even go back that far. So I don't even know what doctor appointment it is and for what it is, but they're asking me for money. So the broker's been helping me figure that out, so I guess now I'm going to be delayed on that, as well as some issues I've had with trying to get some medications secured and other things with the doctors secured. The brokers would help me do that. Now I have nobody to help me because I'm sure, as all of you know, when you are on the phone with any insurance company, as well as the prescription companies, especially Express Script, you go round and round in circles. And every time you call and you think you're going two steps forward, you're getting, no, we never said that, or another person on the phone, you can never get it resolved. And it is unfortunate that this morning, when I looked at the minutes and printed them out, there was nothing about this on the agenda. And then around four thirty, when I'm looking again, all of a sudden, this is there. So I hope all of you who voted for it, especially our new members, understand what the brokers do for us and how they help us. Oscar, did you, I'm just, you know, I'm not, you're not supposed to go back and forth. Does this also include our risk insurance broker that was let go tonight as well? Is that a yes? I'm guessing it's a yes as well. God forbid, we have a fire at a school, something happens at construction, and don't smirk at it because we don't know what can happen. Who's going to help us in the interim? So I hope all of you people who are sitting here really did your due diligence and looked at it, and it wasn't just a line item so we can cross off that we don't have to pay for this amount of money for brokers for these people so we can, I don't know, stash some money or do whatever. And I'm also a little bit confused as a taxpayer, the board attorney and that firm we had hired last year, who helped broker the deal that we had for the three years, and now we come back less than a year later, and that's no good, and they didn't do everything right. So I don't know who to believe as a taxpayer and where my tax dollars are going, but more than that, I am so upset that we are all left hanging with our medical care possibly being delayed and things being denied and nobody to help us navigate it, or if there is even one person in a district this size, it's impossible for them to do it. That's why we hired these companies. If you wanted to change, that's fine. You have your reasons for it, but you should not leave us without that safety net there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Charles Ross, Principal Edison High School, President of the E P S A. I wanted to just sit there, and I told you guys on Thursday when I came to the caucus that I was going Saturday with the students, so they took it all the way down at the North Plainfield Fire Department. It was really a great moment for everyone because it's not just, you know, I'm the person that gets up at a board meeting and tries to have some fun with you guys, and thanks to everybody's generosity. But it's the ETA members, it's members of the Custodians Union that put it together, it's students, it's the secretaries of Edison High School that did a white elephant on their own and raised over eight hundred dollars in that. This is all what we do for children's cancer, so I appreciate it. If anybody still wants to donate, it's never, never too late. I could get some of that Marchios money too. Marchios, if you're watching, Armida, it's St. Baldricks dot com. You could sit there and do that. Speaking of food, local business shout out, we got a great new place called Tika Express on Route twenty seven in South Edison that does Indian takeout. It's an Edison high family. I wanted to talk a couple more great things about what's great about Edison School District. I know under the guidance of Aditya Patel, the Rise Student Conference is taking place tomorrow. It's a student leadership conference at Middlesex County or Middlesex College, where each of the students from the inclusion groups at each of the six secondary schools are going to lead breakout sessions. There's going to be a keynote speaker. I know Dr. Kim is coming. So that's something really demonstrates how Edison is reaching out to get all of our students to the most rigorous possible curriculum. We've also had some wonderful guests, even though we haven't been back at the Home of the Eagles in auditorium. It's good because practicing there tonight is the J P Stevens Drama Team. And this weekend, I think it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, two shows on Saturday, they're going to be doing Footloose, which is a fantastic musical. I've been sneaking in, watching some of their dress rehearsals. They're going to be fantastic. Thanks to all of the guests and Ms. Young and Dr. Kim for them being such a wonderful guests in our building. And, you know, a lot of different things, just wanted to, like Dr. Alderelli said, it's the last break, it's the last meeting before the break for everybody in terms of their celebrations coming up. Hope everybody who celebrates the Eid has a wonderful Eid next week, and we get into Passover and Easter. Hope that everybody's able to spend that time with their families and to celebrate themselves. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Anybody else? Matt, you can come.
Good evening again. Matt Revnak, ETA President. I mentioned the other day I was going to come to speak, piggyback on what I said the other day. And as a teacher, I want to use this platform as an educational tool about public education. In nineteen seventy nine under President Jimmy Carter, Congress passed the Department of Education Organization Act, establishing the Department of Education as a cabinet-level agency, which is why the department cannot be eliminated by executive order, but would need an act of Congress. The Department of Education does not set educational standards or curriculum. That is in the jurisdiction of the states and local school districts. The mission of the Department of Education is to promote educational excellence, ensure equal access to all, such as ensuring civil rights laws and access for students with disabilities. They are responsible for managing federal funding. Basically, they are the gatekeepers and watchdogs of federal funds that are earmarked for programs such as Title One and Elementary and Secondary Education Act, E S E A as it's known, to support low-income and impoverished students in schools. The I D E A, Individuals with Disabilities Act of nineteen seventy five, funding for vocational and technical education, as well as monies to assist students attending college via Pell Grant and student loan programs. Most funding for public schools come from state and local resources, with the federal government contributing approximately eight percent of public school funding. Here in New Jersey, it's about five point three percent, which totals about one point one billion dollars. But those monies are earmarked for the intended purposes that I previously mentioned. No one is opposed to eliminating wasteful spending. However, that actually is the charge of what the Department of Education does. Now, how does this affect Edison? You actually saw in today's board minutes a few of those title programs I mentioned. Title One, Edison gets approximately two point four million dollars, which goes in need for low-income families, extracurriculars like tutoring after-school programs, et cetera. Title Two, we get about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which basically is for hiring instructional coaches, professional development, et cetera. Title Three, we get approximately two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which is for our English language learners. Title Four, STEM programs, A P programs, dropout prevention and community engagement, we get approximately a hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. I D E A Part B, we get four million three hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. That supports our students, special education students, students with disabilities. And we have other aid, additional areas of federal education, such as the Impact Aid, Medicaid reimbursement, Vote Ed, and preschool development. That's about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, for a total of over eight million dollars. So that's what we're talking about, that Edison would lose if we lost our federal funding. You may have heard the president say, we spend the most money on education in the world, but are ranked last. That is not true and does not represent all the facts. While our per pupil expenditure is among the highest, there are a couple countries in the world above us. Luxembourg is actually the most. There are underlying reasons for this, which are never discussed. Such expenses as transportation costs, free and reduced lunch programs, co-curricular in sports, et cetera, need to be taken in consideration. They do not necessarily happen in other countries of the world. The cost of healthcare, countries such as Canada, for example, have centralized medicine, so that is not part of their education budgets. Here in the U S, our policies are what is known as F A I, Free Appropriate Public Education for All, something that even our founding fathers believed in. That is not necessarily the case in other countries around the world. We are not last in the rankings. In fact, in most polls, we are the upper middle. However, we educate everyone. We are not an education system of the haves and have-nots. What will happen to our most needy students if federal funding were to be diverted to other areas? Would service to our special needs students be cut? If federal funds do not roll into the states and states are required by law to fund special needs, that will leave one of three options: revise the state laws on special education, fund special needs programs at the expense of other programs, or significantly raise state and/or local property taxes. To put this in perspective, I was at a conference a few years back at the N J A convention when a representative from the College Board came in, presented, and stated, congratulations, New Jersey, you have the top S A T scores in the country. Actually, he said, Arkansas does, but they have five percent of their population take the S A T. New Jersey has ninety-five percent take it. In closing, public education will be severely impacted if funding is diverted to charter or private schools or a school voucher system. Funding needs to be used for its intended purposes. These other forms of education are not held to the same standards as public schools. We need to let our legislators know that one of our most important institutions is public education, and that we will not stand for any changes that will negatively impact our schools, our students, or our chosen professions. One more thing I want to add, and I'm out of time, but give me another minute. On a side note.
Wrap it up, please, yeah.
All right, I'll come back.
It's not a comeback. It's not a comeback. Bad you do that, right? So, anyone else? Yes, Harish.
Harish Thatineni, forty-five McKinley Street. Not sure if this was already covered. If so, apologies. Regarding the transportation, subscription busing, so a lot of parents had this question if they would know the exact bus stop of their kid for the next school year before they pay the subscription busing fees, since that cannot be refunded under any circumstances. I know that rule was pretty clear earlier also. So this is because last time, for, in order to maintain the efficiency and timeliness of the bus service, some stops were eliminated. So if that is not feasible for them, they would rather not opt for the So if that is not feasible for them, they would rather not opt for the subscription busing. I mean, I understand the dilemma because everything has to be run in a lean and mean way. So unless and until it is at least two-thirds or three-fourths filled up, it's not possible to run the bus efficiently since it is subsidized, even the subscription busing. I understand that. So how difficult is it after the initial response to make the bus stop public before they pay the fees? So that is first question. And second...
Okay. Any other questions?
So, second is, some people didn't receive the subscription busing email. So does it automatically mean, can they safely conclude that they are eligible for the free busing? Because there were some discrepancies I heard on social media, like some people were eligible for free bus, but they still received the email, so they are a bit confused. We just told them to check with the transportation department directly instead of trying to figure out their distance on Google Maps and all that. So that's it pretty much for transportation.
That's it. Okay. So the email clearly said that only the people who need a subscription bus, they should apply. For the mandated bus, they don't need to do anything because by law, we're transporting them. As far as bus stops and a subscription, I'm going to ask, you know, Eddie and John to answer that.
Yeah, so I would, I would say that, so the routes aren't done until late...
Right, so you're, you're working on your routing, right? Building your route packages. You're doing that in the months of like May and June and into July. And you're doing that based on your paid bus roster. So, and then once you have that roster, you do equidistant, you know, bus stops and proximity to students' homes. So you want to know who's actually on the bus, not maybe on the bus.
So my recommendation would be, is that anybody that thinks that they want subscription busing should sign up for it at that time, wait for the phone call, and the confirmation notice from transportation. In the event that the route meets and the stops meets with their satisfaction, they'll be on the list. If not, they have the opportunity to withdraw their application, and they would then go to people that are on the waitlist. Is that, is that fair to say?
Fair. You can't, you know, ask for a refund after two months, you know, being, when the school starts, right? So that's what it is. If they, they don't like the stop, just drop out right away. Okay? Any other comments?
Right.
So Harish, before you leave, Eriko, Shi, and Patel ran for election. It says bus services for all students. More stops, no fee increase. So there shouldn't be an issue. You should be fine. Anyway, are you guys going to answer any of my questions, or should I just sit down?
Sit down.
I've asked about ten questions already and not answered, but I'll add another one. I'm reviewing the finance committees. You guys met twice. There was no discussion about removing of brokers. You met on March third, you met on March eighteenth, and there's nothing in the minutes discussing about brokers. So my question is, when was the discussion about brokers then? That's number, that's question number one. Back to busing. I know last year, we, we had many complaints coming to the board regarding busing. We actually lowered the mileage, I believe. I think we knocked it down to one point seven.
Not you.
So my question is, if we're giving free busing to everybody, Ronik, why are we not, why do we put a limit at two? I doubt everybody's getting free busing. My kid has to cross Plainfield Avenue and Route twenty-seven to get to school. I also pay four hundred and seventy dollars a month for childcare to get him to school. So if I could pay six hundred and twenty-five dollars to get him to school, I'd rather do that. So it's not fair. That was something you ran on, free busing for everybody. Follow-up of your obligation, that's what you ran on. The second thing, or the third thing I want to talk about. So we're going back to the discussion of that resolution. Now, Chris took it to municipal lawyers who had no issue with it. I took it to superintendents and BAs and attorneys, and they had no issue with it. But one individual kept saying, "Oh, wait, it's bad. It's written wrong." Now, my understanding is, I believe, John, you wrote the resolution, and I think you did a good job on it. You literally, you stated the statute. But it also was reviewed by Matt Mench, our attorney. So if that attorney said, "Hey, everything is great," why is it an issue now? So now we're taking the advice of this attorney, saying the resolution is wrong, which none of us believe it's wrong. It's our own made-up truths. So when these individuals decide to sue us, because it is a breach, a breach of contract, now, do we hold the attorney liable for this because he gave the advice to the board? Do we hold Matt Mench liable because he's the one that approved the resolution to begin with? I don't know. Do I make sense here, or? No, I really would love to hear from my leadership. You know what I mean? I love you, Eddie. I gave you the fifth year because I believe in you. But, you know, I've asked multiple questions every month, and I get no answers. You know, Anjita, we, we voted yes last year to this with no issue. Suddenly, there's an issue. You know, people are talking. Is it because you're running for mayor? Everybody thinks you're running for mayor now. I don't know. But, you know, it sounds all skeptical. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at what people's intentions really are here. Then my final question is, last year, there was a flyer that was posted up in Cafeterias. I'm going to refer this to the Food Committee. You said something that samosas were great. Everybody loves them. Last year, someone put up those flyers. Atul Bakery, I believe it was. They were illegally posted up there, where I know Chris and I had issues with it. We said it while we were on the board. We actually had a meeting, me, Chris, and Joe Romano, and I believe Mr. Huss was there with Machio's themselves. And Machio's, let's just say, they were very sorry that that occurred. So my question is, now, I believe Atul Bakery is another mayor candidate, running for mayor. Is this the individual that's supplying samosas for our schools? Because to me, I think that would be a conflict of interest. Why is a mayor candidate in our schools? So can someone tell me if that's Atul Bakery? And I got a minute and forty-six seconds if anybody wants to answer anything. I feel like doing a Cristo.
You don't?
I got a minute and thirty-one seconds. I could sing, dance, do everything. It's my time, I guess.
Okay, you can stand there.
I'm just waiting for some answers.
Well, you could, you answer, if you finish, you know, ask the question, you can sit down. We'll answer it.
I keep falling for the same trick. Dude, Cristo's the man. He really nailed it. I got to learn from this guy. It's a joke, really is.
Any other public comments? Matt?
Are these comments or rebuttals, sir?
Let's rebuttal them, right? So it's whatever we said, you know, if you want to rebuttal...
Yep, just to finish up my speech. On a side note, please pay attention to what is going on at state level. Know what the gubernatorial candidate's position is pertaining to education.
Matt, Matt, let's be fair, right? I didn't let the other people do this. Let's, let's, let's have the same...
But, you know, I would assume that as a president of seventeen hundred fifty of your people, you give me an extra minute or two.
I, I'm sorry.
And it's also disrespectful to say, "Please don't come back up." I have never come up here and bashed anyone, attacked anyone. In fact, even last meeting, I came up to explain why we did or didn't do something to inform you guys.
Matt, we can, we can talk offline. If you want...
There's really not much to talk about.
If you want to talk about something that any board member responded to your first comment, you can come for a rebuttal.
Okay, well, I'm responding to the statement that was made about, "Please don't come back up." It's disrespectful.
Okay.
It's rude for someone that, for basically about twenty years in his district, I have always worked and tried to work cooperatively with our administration, who I have no issue with at all, our Board of Ed members, et cetera. I have never come up here in twenty years to attack anyone, even before, when I responded and just basically, "This is what I'm elected to do, and this is what I'm paid to do," about our health benefits. You don't live it every day. We do. And to sit there and shake your head and say no, whatever, is not the case. And it shouldn't fall on people that are already doing a job. I, like I said, I don't care what broker you hire. I don't give a damn as long as they're doing their job. But you have on here June first. So the way I'm looking at it is, you have no broker as of now, and on June first, you'll have a broker. That's a two-month and week gap of not having a service that we need to be provided. And you're sitting there shaking your head. However, as I originally said it, if the meeting was held like it should have been between my union leadership, Mr. Ross's union leadership, et cetera, probably this would have not happened tonight. But again, it wasn't done the right way.
Thank you. Motion to close public comments?
I'll take that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Mr. Romano and Mr. Eriko. All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Now, we'll open up for board member comments. Any board member wants to say anything?
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Well, I wanted to take a moment and extend, extend my recognition for, for three group of people. The first recognition is for Ms. Samantha Ginaldi, Ms. Jennifer, Ms. Nicole Halpin, Ms. Kristen, and Dr. Joni. I mean, the way they explained the North Star Statement Journey, it was inspiring. I mean, I see their passion in it. The, you know, every word they used was, you know, well-crafted, and kudos to them for doing it and coming up with such a nice mission statement. Second recognition, I want to extend it to Mr. Cohen and Ms. Happening again for, for the speed with which they made the decision on Happening, on making the C.I.C.S.A.I. Academy. I know it's fast, and I, I'm sure there, there are ways that they can improve it if there were more time, but I, I commend their courage to start an iterate, because nothing is perfect. Whenever you do something for the first time, no matter how plan, how much plan you do, there's always things you can change. So I commend their courage to do it, you know, with such a fast, you know, less amount of, less number of, you know, weeks, and encourage to iterate it over the period of time. And lastly, I want to give recognition to Dr. Alderelli for leading by example and empowering his team to innovate, inspire, and elevate. I, I see three examples where we are making a decisions and then we are iterating over it, right? One example I want to give is the sports. I think last year, we tried to improve our, our sports scheduling by bringing the sports into school, and then we realized it, it wasn't perfect. It wasn't what we wanted. So we quickly changed that in the, in the winter season. Second example, I guess, is a selection criteria for Bio Academy. Administration, you know, realized that we could improve the selection criteria, and in a matter of days, based on some feedback they received, they were able to update the selection criteria and accommodate more number of students and then keep the process fair and square. And I guess third example is the C.S.A.I. Academy. I, I don't know what iteration we are going to do next, but I, you know, give a kudos to the entire team to start this academy quickly, and I'm sure we'll iterate over it and then we'll make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to echo the same thing that, that, you know, just example is the Biomedical Academy. Within three days after we talked to the administration, and things got changed. And the speed and the responsiveness from the administration team, Dr. Alderelli, and Mr. Cohen, and Dr. Huss, and our supervisors, you know, the entire team, thank you. Without your speedy response, that would not be possible. So I always have a question for the administration. So we heard a lot of requests from the public about pre-K. So do we have any comments? Last year, the lottery already started. Ronik touched a little bit on the pre-K situation. So, Dr. Alderelli, if you, is Dr. Tuie still here?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Shi. Yeah, so I know correspondence went out to a select group of pre-K, pre-K students currently right now, but I'm probably going to mess some of the dates up, and I'm going to call Dr. Tuie up to the podium right now to just kind of clarify some of the processes. I think the question, Dr. Tuie, is in relationship to pre-K for the upcoming school year.
Upcoming school year, and, and yes, thank you, Mr. Shi. And Mr. Patel, thank you for the report. You did an awesome job in your first report, and we didn't want to, to preempt our Board of Education. So as Dr. Alderelli mentioned, we had a communication go out to the parents of our current pre-K students, sitting in seats right now, students who started the year at three years old, and next year will be four years old. They, they have a good understanding of what the program looks like for them next year. Tomorrow, any students who will be participating and our partner locations are going to receive communication from my office in terms of process moving forward, lottery procedures and timeline. So by this time tomorrow night, anybody who could potentially be part of our pre-K program will have all the information they need.
So this is the people who are already registered to participate in our pre-K program?
Yes, so they do need to preregister still, unless anybody who's not currently sitting in a classroom will need to preregister so we can vet them for residency, and then they'll participate in our lottery process. Anybody who is sitting in a classroom, we already have all their registration, and they'll move straight on into next year.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. So, yeah, I just want to mention that what Dr. Alderelli mentioned, and the spring break is coming up, and it's a perfect time for our students to take a break, a break, and, and relax, and we're coming back for the, you know, the second part of, of the, the school year to finish, finish it up. So with that said, can I have a motion to...
Thank you.
Yes.
Just one minute.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, sorry.
I just had to mention this because it's just so good. We all received this letter from John Sazali about the J.P. Stevens Band Program. On Thursday, March twentieth, at the CJ MEA Region Concert Band Festival in Monroe, the J.P. Stevens Wind Ensemble and Symphonic Band both earned gold ratings. As a result of their performance, the Wind Ensemble was awarded top honors among forty band performances across central Jersey and will represent the Region, Region Two in this year's Evening State Gala Festival. Prestigious event showcasing top six ensembles across the entire state. Congratulations to all the musicians on this outstanding achievement. And he goes on to say that he's so happy that it continued Andy Deena Cola's legacy. He really, really is so humble, I thought. And, you know, Mr. Sazali has done a magnificent job moving that whole program forward in a very, very positive way. You know, J.P. Stevens Band is incredible, and we know from tonight's performance with Penny Montana and her group, this school is one of the feeder schools for that band. So you know that it's just going to keep getting better and better. Good job, Mr. Sazali. Good job, kids. I mean, you were, not only are you academically talented, you're musically talented too. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other board member any comments? Yes, Chris.
Thank you, President Shi. Yeah, I just want to just echo about the empower Edison. What a fantastic endeavor. Coming from, I, I am a scientist, I am an inventor, and when I hear people excited about ideas, I get excited because I know, I know what it feels like to bring something forward and to see it through to fruition. You know, kudos. I, I think it's a fantastic endeavor, and I hope to hear more fantastic things from them to, to come. Secondly, I think we had our ETA president up here at the podium. I, I think he used the word irresponsible, but quite frankly, I would actually say that's too soft of a word right now. And I would like to say that in your twenty, in the twenty, March, I'm sorry, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four... I'm sorry, May 21st, 2024 email, Mr. Tote, you sent out, you sent out how the staff ranked the brokers, correct? And different categories, how they ranked their strengths, and Brown &amp; Brown came up on top unanimously across four people. Honestly, I don't know, I can't even put it into kind words right now, to see them dismissed. But I just wanted to make a note that somebody who did not make the cut was Alamo, and I hope not to see them back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? All right. Can I have a motion to...? Did we have a motion to adjourn, or no?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Okay, second, second, okay. All right. All in favor? Aye. All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.